Ms. Walker, if you would do us the pleasure of a brief indication, we appreciate it. And then we'll have the pleasure of leaving.
Let's bow again. Oh heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for giving us the Spirit to be here this afternoon. We ask for your presence in our meeting. We ask that you plan the agenda. Give us a feeling of grace and have mercy on us as we proceed with this agenda. Let us work together in harmony, kindness toward each other, as we present our beliefs and our stance on different issues. These things we ask in your Son's name forever and amen.
Okay, now we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank all of you for coming out and joining us this evening. Our first presentation is on student housing project at Prairie View University, Phase 9, and that would be Dr. Bradford. And as a reminder, if you could, and I know sometimes I have trouble with it, but if you can, just put your phone on vibrate. You got the vibrate part. Dr. Bradford.
Okay, good afternoon. Remember, we're not supposed to stand. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I am honored to be here today to give you an update on the next phase of housing at Prairie View University. As you all might have heard, we had a little challenge this year with housing. This year Prairie View brought in its largest freshman class ever. We brought in over 2,200 freshmen. Naturally, that's going to have a ripple effect when those freshmen become sophomores. And so they renew their contract, and then we have incoming student body coming in, and they also need places to stay. And so what the university is trying to do is ensure that we have adequate housing for students who want to reside on campus. We found out the hard way that a lot of our students really want to be on campus. They want to reside at the university. And so the university has taken the proactive stance to build the next housing phase, Phase 9. And so Phase 9 will include about 540 beds. It will have 7,000 real square feet clubhouse. It will be located adjacent to University View. This will allow our upperclassmen who wish to stay on campus to have a place to stay. The housing will be available in the year of 2020. And so we come before the board to seek your approval and consent for the financing of this project. This project is being a tax exempt bond financing, and therefore, according to IRS code, we need the consent of the city of Prairie. Any questions?
Counsel Rowland. Attorney, have the attorney reviewed the subsequent document?
Yes, I've reviewed the resolution at this point.
Thank you.
We need to move the agenda item up because it's, this is the presentation. We can move the agenda item up, but I'm looking for it on the agenda.
Is it number two on the agenda?
Is it? Yes, okay. So we can move that up for action now, Counsel, if you'd like.
Okay. The Chair will accept a motion to move item two on the agenda.
Yeah, I want to move that we move agenda item number two to after the presentation.
It's been properly moved to second, that item two be moved up to correspond with the presentation on student housing. The motion ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed have the same right? Ayes have it. Okay, item two is discussion and possible action on a resolution approving the financing by the New Hope Cultural Education Facilities Finance Corporation of Student Housing Facilities Located Within the City of Prairie View, Texas, for CHF-Colegeiate Housing Prairie View 9 LLC. And the presentation has been given and information presented by the Director Corey Bradford of the university. Counsel. I just had, I guess, a question. What, why is this financing different than any other financing previously approved?
Yeah, our last three financings have all been exit deals, and so we're going to have to get tax exempt bond for those projects. So just a different method of financing.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Rowland.
I move that we approve the resolution approving the finance... Approving the financing by the New Hope Cultural Educational Facility Finance Corporation of Student Housing Facilities Located Within the City of Prairie View, Texas, for CHF-Colegeiate Housing Prairie View, Texas.
Second. It's been properly moved to second that the resolution approving the financing by the New Hope Cultural Education Facilities Finance Corporation of Student Housing Facilities Located Within the City of Prairie View, Texas, be approved. You've heard most of you, anything questions?
Questions.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And let there be a record vote. Ms. Johnson? Counsel Rowland?
Aye.
Randall? Jones? Williams? Wallace?
Uh.
Okay, let the record show is unanimous. Just wanted to be clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item, citizen comments will be our next order of the day. First one is Boy Scouts, Tyler Stafford. Yes, sir. Do anything. Here, pull the mic down to you so you can speak into it. There you go, sir. Okay.
I'm Tyler Stafford. I am 11 years old and am in the sixth grade attending Schultz Junior High. Yeah, Schultz Junior High. I don't know. Some of my future goals in my life are to graduate and then go to Harvard and major in business. And also, I'm starting a company that will be called AERC, standing for the Association of Entertainment and Research for Comics.
Anything else? Next, we have Jeremiah Thomas.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
My name is Jeremiah Thomas. I'm 11 years old. I was born in Seattle, Washington. I got a hocus pocus intermediate. I'm in the sixth grade. My favorite superhero is Black Panther. My favorite sport is football and then basketball and track. When I grow up, I want to go to a D1 college and play in the NFL. And my second plan is being an engineer like my mom and dad.
Cedric Thomas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cedric Thomas. I'm in ninth grade. I attend Pine Hill High School. My favorite sport is also football. And my future goal is also to play in NFL and also to be an engineer like my dad.
Ronald Everett.
Good evening, just counsel, mayor and counsel. Basically, I want to, I guess, again, come back and ask a concern that I've had for, I guess, about six months. I talked, I spoke with some engineers today. They were facing an electric pole on, in a private property on Hotter Hawk Street. And I'm not sure if that pole is to be connected to a travel trailer that's sitting in the yard. But I'm encouraged, I don't know what your guidelines are as far as travel trailers being connected. I noticed that we have several trails of temporary homes being connected to the utilities. One thing I'm really concerned about, as we are growing, the city's growing fast. We're bringing a lot of industry in. We have a lot of businesses coming in, and our progress is being supported. But I think that, you know, what I'm looking at, as I'm looking at the agenda, you know, we are really spending a lot of time with some, you know, streets and naming street signs. I mean, those are projects true enough. But I really, I really would like to see, we have the engineers here, because I don't think that we have that, depending on the present treatment plan. And we have some questions that need to be read. I think that there are some things that even some of the citizens, probably even volunteer, one or two, that could help us solve some of those problems. I think that, you know, looking at some of the, some of the conditions that I said we have approved, and I think that probably is a possibility that more districts within the city could be set up with the certain vision that are coming in. I'm concerned, excuse my voice, I'm really concerned about the dust. All of the dust that's coming across, I don't know many of you out here, if you notice that a lot of people are suffering with all the cement dust. I don't know if it's Texas, East Texas, Precash, I don't know if it's a cement plant. But in the evenings, it's so dusty, the cement driving down 298, it's like a fall. And I think that a lot of us are being affected. And I know that cement dust is in the lungs when I deal. So I don't know what the condition of the city is, but I think that we as citizens are being affected by it. And you as citizens as well, I think that we really should be concerned about it. I don't know what the government, the agency state, and you know, it's interesting too. I noticed today that we even built another cement plant. And I was told that one of the plants that I got right, we don't even supply water to them. So where do you get the water from? Do they have own water system? Are you familiar? I'm sorry, you can't answer, I forgot, you can't answer. But are you, if your counsel is not familiar with what I'm talking about, and I won't be saying something that is wrong, you know, this is my opinion. So I want to make sure this is my opinion, that I don't, you know, get caught in saying something that's not correct. But it's my opinion that that should be looked into. And also, we are, I noticed that we're getting ready to build another facility down behind, by the school. Y'all really start doing the plumbing work. Wow, it's really going fast. And I'm wondering, do we really have the capacity to meet all of this new folks that we have? So I'm encouraging us to really look into that. And I think one other thing on here that you scheduled to appoint, biggest one, to appoint two, you know, corporations. And I didn't see the names. I think that you should have listed, probably that you should have listed the names of the people that you were planning to replace with 4B. So I'm, you know, I'm, that's just, you couldn't help to make the council aware that you want to replace them, for them to review. But I don't think they had time to really know who the people are.
Dr. Vida Brown.
Good afternoon, everybody. So the city council and the mayor and all the beautiful citizens of Prairie View. I didn't want to turn my back this way because my comments will be, you know, how you say they throw shade, is that what you're saying? And it's going in that direction. But anyway, the last time I was before you, I spoke to you about a meeting that city council had back in December the 20th, where you had one item on the agenda. That one item on the agenda was very specific. It was very detailed. And it called for city council members to go on an executive session, to have a discussion about this one specific issue. But when it came out of that executive session, they had made a decision, or when they got here, they made a decision, that was much broader than the one specific item on the agenda. So when I was here before you last time, I told you that I would do some research to find out from the Attorney General's office if our dearly beloved city council had possibly violated the Open Meetings Act. And guess what? I sincerely believe that that's something that we have to look at. Not just because there were decisions made and votes made beyond that one specific item that was on the agenda, but also because it affected in a financial way businesses that had some type of concern about that decision, broad decision that was made. So instead of making a decision about that one specific item that was on the agenda, our city council, for whatever reason, made a decision that affected a broad number of businesses in our area. And I've spoken to some of them, and they told me that they had been aware that that type of broad decision was going to be made. They would have come to that particular meeting to express their concerns.
Hold up just a second. I'm hearing people talking. Please don't, the public meeting, please, go ahead.
If they, let me repeat that. The businesses in our city who were adversely affected by the decision that the city council may have shared with me that if they had known that our city council was going to make a broad decision rather than a decision specific to what was on the agenda, they would have been here to express their concerns. They were not given that opportunity. So in speaking with the Attorney General's office, I was encouraged to pursue it legally, further legally. And I really do love my city. I really do. And I hate to see us legally liable for something that's an oversight or a mistake. So I am asking our attorney to review that decision because obviously, everything that happened during that meeting, all the decisions that were made and those that were subsequent that co-tailed onto that, they're not legal. So I'm asking to take another look at that, review it from a legal perspective. And I'll wait, I won't pursue it further, I promise, until we've had a chance to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Delita Russell.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmen, ladies and gentlemen, visitors of Prairie View. My name is Delita Russell, and I live on Richards Road. And I just want to bring to your attention some issues that we have on Richards Road. When you turn right off of Business 290 here and you travel northward, there's no speed limit signs, okay? So everybody that travels that road just decides they can go as fast as they want. And actually, we've had some people even get in dangerous situations because they're wanting to pass one another. And we used to have double yellow stripe going down the middle. And since the road has been repaved, we have no stripes on that road. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention. We have speeding and passing. And actually, three weeks ago, I was almost in a head-on collision because of people passing each other. And it looked like, I don't know who they were, whether they're residents or residents. I wouldn't think there would be residents, but I have no clue because it happened so quickly. But they were racing and passing each other, going straight down and heading towards me right over the newly paved road I passed. So I was coming over, you know, it's two lanes when you go over the bridge, but it goes to one lane. And I had to ditch because they were racing or passing one another. So that was quite scary. And I wanted to bring to your attention when things were happening. I don't know how to resolve this issue, whether it be speed bumps or just put some, you know, police officers there, posted out there to draw attention that, you know, we shouldn't be speeding down this road. But I also wanted to let you know, with all the rain that has been happening, our newly paved road is washing away. So the potholes are getting really big and really wide. And the reason that the newly paved road is washing away is because the ditches are no longer ditches. They're just solid dirt straight across there. So there's been times that I can go to the mailbox, and if it's been raining and there's rain in the road, I've got to look out, make sure there's no students or residents driving down the road because I would be soaking wet, you know? Because as they go through the water, I mean, it just goes like four or five feet high. So anyway, those are, those are things that are going on. And I had mentioned months ago too, that there's no lighting on that road. And there are students that are still jogging and getting their exercise early, using Richards Road. And so they do it late in the evening, and that's going to be a hazard too if we don't get any sort of lighting out there. So anyway, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate being able to come and voice some comments and concerns.
Abby Bruder.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
I have a couple of things that I would like to talk about. Number one, I would like to see, and maybe I just don't know how to find them, the documentation that's provided to all of you when you're making decisions that are on the agenda. So if it's not online, I'd like it to be online. If it is online, make it attached to the agenda. The, please. The second thing I'd like to talk about, I've talked about this before, about the flooding that I see happening with the student housing that's on Richards Road. And Mary, you assured me that they're putting in a retention pond. So I shouldn't be concerned. And I'm telling you with my own eyes, they pump the retention pond water onto Richards Road and onto Ellen Powell. So the retention pond isn't going to address flooding if they dump it out. And you can see on Richards Road, no ditches anymore because all the sediment is there. Water doesn't drain down Ellen Powell because of all the sediment that they dumped down at what used to be ditches. So I would like for you to pay attention to that as you go forward in building the city, of making sure those things are addressed when it starts. Thank you very much for your time.
Marie Kivin.
Hello. I'd like to say hello to the mayor, the council, and all the attendees. My name is Marie Kivin. I'm here to complain about my utility bill. I wrote a letter, a little memo, short memo, to the mayor and the council because I had already spoken to the mayor concerning this. And I will briefly go over it with you. So I am writing to request a review of my utility bill. The county gives my account number. They are consistently the same amount regardless of usage. I'm particularly, I'm particularly concerned about the period of December 5th through January 5th. During this period, I was out of town for 17 days. December 20th, 2018, through January 5th, 2019. My bill was exactly the same as when I'm there all the time. My bill is always the same amount, but I really can't understand how I have a 32-day bill gone for 17 days, and the amount is still the same when I was only there 15 days. So I would like my meter reread again or try to figure out what has happened here because I feel that I am due a refund. I'd like to know from the time that the meter is read, what are the steps to calculate the bill? I want to know how to calculate my own bill so I won't have this problem anymore. And I'll take my answer in a letter, if you don't mind. Thanks.
Bernice Webster.
My name is Bernice Webster, and I'm representing homeowners association in Alta Vista. And I have a few of my members here with me as a backup. As I speak, I would like to give the council a few handouts so you can follow me and my observation because my primary purpose for my coming is to ask the council for help. So let me pass this out first. Yes, yes, thank you. And then I will proceed with my discussion. The reason I came to ask the council for help because that is a building on Oak Street in the, let me get my sheet before me so I can be as active there as possible. On 9/11, 224 Oak Street. And I'm asking the council for help because, and didn't the person they permit to build, the person committed a fraud. Commonly speaking, she lied. I'm talking about the owners of that construction or building. It's Michelle and Cesar Woodard. I'm talking about the owners of that construction or building is Michelle and Cesar Woodard. And most importantly, with her committing a fraud, if you look on the permit, she said that this was a single-family resident in the block that's labeled SFR. And if you see that block, she has that checked. The settlement I gave you, she has a sign up there for lease. And if it were a single-family resident, in my opinion, there would be no need for that lease sign. So I was asking the city, the council, the city to look into that because a fraud was committed in doing that. That is not a family resident, it's commercial property. And that is against the deed restriction of Alta Vista. There is no parking. How's that, there are someone in the house now. And with her saying it's a single-family resident, that is a blatant lie. Additionally, that house does not complement any of the other houses in Alta Vista. So whatever the help that the city can give the association, and it will certainly be appreciated. There was no notice of occupancy prior to people moving into that house. So again, I want the city, whatever help you could lend or give to the association would greatly be appreciated. Thank you.
Janet Lemell?
Good evening. My name is Janet Lemell. And I've just come to share with the mayor and the council and the residents of Prairie View about a project that the Wall of Pregnancy Care Center is thinking about undertaking for the community. If you're not familiar with the Wall of Pregnancy Care Center, we are a nonprofit organization that is located in Waller. We assist mothers that are pregnant or parenting with children up to the age of three. We provide free pregnancy tests, we provide ultrasound, we do parenting classes, we provide baby supplies. So some of you might be familiar with us. Well, we are actually had an opportunity to go into various cities. And we're in Prairie View, we're in the WIC office, we go to Hempstead in the library. We've been in Brookshire doing classes as well. But we can outreach with our classes, but we have decided that we want to begin medical services on a mobile medical bus.